Now, it's my understanding we have one more item on the agenda that has two high school students attached to it, so we're gonna call that one next.
So, we're going to go to commendations, and we always have high school students read our commendations, so I know we've got two here in the audience, Fatima Clay and Amanda Fahim.
Commendations to the outstanding high school vocalists who attended and won honors at the state-level Michigan School Vocal Music Association State Solo and Ensemble. Etzel Ford High School vocalist, uh, excuse me, Lideria Avery and Nora Hean each earned prestigious one ratings, and Catherine Dix earned a two. A note of thanks to Mrs. Sarah Yates, Sarah Hayes Jacobek for her assistance and accompaniment, and to Fortson's Mr. Matt Laura for serving as the site supervisor for Etzel Ford. From Dearborn High School, soloist Katie Garber was awarded a one, the duet team of Katie Garber and Maria Viskami, who were awarded a two, and the DHS Men's Ensemble, who also received a one. The Fortson Ensemble, Jamila, also earned a prestigious one at the competition. Congratulations to all participating students and their dedicated instructors.
Commendations for the following staff members who served as advanced external review team members, where they took leadership roles in a three-day accreditation process in various districts. Hilda Iraniani and Jill Marvaso from Maples Elementary, Iman Ahmad from Salina Intermediate, and Fatma Farash with the Administrative Service Center. Commendations to Ann Morbido, Secretary at Duval Elementary, who last fall donated several host of plants that are upcoming this spring, and the Brem Memorial Garden in front of Fortson High School.
Commendations to the Lindbergh students, families, and staff who raised over $8,000 during their annual Jump Rope for Heart fundraising during February and March. Students participated in jump rope activities during physical education class. They also learned about eating healthy, staying physically active, and the importance of this event, which raises money to help find a cure for heart disease. Special thanks to the top fundraising student leaders, Kindergarteners Dominic Lewis and Maya Toko Coleman, and third grader Anthony Abella.
Commendations to the students at Salina Elementary who held a special talent show and raised $1,115 to help children in the country of Yemen. A note of appreciation to all who supported the event, and thank you for the performers and the hosts on their hard work to benefit those in need.
Commendations to the five Fortson students who, in recognition of their academic excellence, exceptional leadership, and deep commitment in their communities, have received the 2017 Brem scholarships. Mohammed Awada, Mohammed Hamid, Nada Jeradat, Zara Mackie, and Mahdi Maza. Available to Fortson graduating seniors, the Brem Scholars Program awards full tuition for years undergraduate scholarships to the University of Michigan Ann Arbor.
Commendations to the 18 DCMST students who competed with more than 2,000 students from the tri-county area in the Science and Engineering Fair of Metropolitan Detroit at the COBO Center in March. First, second, and third, and by invitation for fourth, placed winners were eligible to compete in the state area science fair on April 1st at Kettering University in Flint. First-place winners were Senior Amanda Sala for her project toward further understanding in human addition using cellulogens; 10th-grade student Arsalan Khan for the project The Effect of Saps on Soil Moisture and Plant Height: Solving the Drop Crisis; and second-place winners were 10th-grade students Khada Abdulshai, Leann Haydous, and Tan Paco. Third-grade winners were 10th-grade students Batul Hamud and George Zegler. Three students received fourth-place outstanding awards, and eight more students took home a fifth-place excellent award.
In addition, the following students earned professional awards. Fatima Bazey, U.S. Patent and Trademark Certificate; Leann Haydous, Water Environment Federation and ASU Walton Sustainability Solution Certificates; Arsalin Khan, Environmental Management Association $500 Scholarship Award; T. N. Paco, Special $500 Cash Reward for Developing a Project That Will Better Humanity and Improve Conditions in the Local Community; and Georgia Zegler, ASU Walton Sustainability Solution Certificate. Seven students from DCMST went on to participate at the state competition. Arsalin Khan and T. N. Paco earned second-place awards and additional awards from NASA and the American Statistical Association, respectively. Batul Hamud earned an award from ASA; Georgia Zegler and Catherine Garber earned fourth-place awards, with Katie also earning a Kettering University scholarship worth 200, or, excuse me, $22,500. Congratulations to all of these DCMST participants for their hard work and success.
Now, commend- (laughing) It's a pretty awesome thing. Commendations to more than 70 student performers and technicians from 16 schools who made the Stout Theatre Company's production of Aladdin Junior a great success. Special thanks to the district staff members Rashid Badun, Jim Walters, Eric Shea, and as well as Rolinda Cronin and the other parents for the tireless efforts working together to make this the most wonderful production Dearborn has seen in a while, so thank you very much.
What professionals. One sec, Trustee Lane had a question for you two.
I was just wondering what school you-
They're from Fortson, I'm sorry.
Great job.
You guys look so professional, too. Great job.
Not to embarrass them, but I think we do have Mr. Rashid Badun in the audience. Is he still here?
He was here earlier, I know, I saw him.
He's hiding.
There he is.
All right, I guess we'll go backwards then.
Okay, now we're, now we're to the next part. The high schoolers are free to leave, so that they can go back and get their rest for the morning. And we will move back onto the agenda as planned. Citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the Board on Agenda and Non-Agenda Items for Action who are signed in by 7:10 p.m. by submitting a blue card to the secretary may speak at this time. The Board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items, therefore speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. The Board President reserves the right to limit times. All right, we've got a number here, so I'm going to try to, you're gonna have to listen for your name. Ms. Annie Carter wishes to speak about Wayne Risa election.
I'm here just to let you know that I am ready to roll up my sleeve and go to work, but right now I'm a little bit like dazed from all the great things I see that the students of Dearborn Public Schools are doing. I think you guys deserve a round of applause. You're doing an outstanding job. It's very rare that Board members ever get any type of ovation or either recognition. Well, I'm here to tell you that my name will be on the ballot for a candidate for Wayne Risa Board, and as you know, only one that could vote for you is a school board. So, with that being said, I think that everyone needs to know, what do Annie Carter look like? What have Annie Carter done? Well, I've served Detroit Public Schools students for more than 35 years, from being a volunteer parent to being an employee of the district, and then served on Detroit Board of Education for a little over 10 years. So far, at this time, I've been retired from Detroit Board of Education for five months. I'm ready to roll my sleeve back up and get back to work for Wayne County, because as I go around to these Board meetings, I see there is awesome, awesome things that the school districts are doing, and the boards are doing, but there is no place that I could see it in writing unless and I go to your website, or some other person may need in the street and they might tell you what their school is doing. I think Wayne Risa need to come into this age, to the 21st century. They have not had an election, well, they had an election, but they haven't even had any new people on the Board since 2001, I believe, but there is open to open, and I think there's an individual that's been there 36 years. So, I'm asking you guys to give me your support as your representative, not only that, as your neighbor, because I just stay across the street of Tyrman and Schaefer, so, you know, you can always reach me, to be a part of, be your Board, be your voice, your Wayne Risa representative. And I promise you that I will not let this be my first, my first meeting, I won't let it be my last. And President Bazey, congratulations, I think I met you during the campaign trail, we was at an event, I think that is wonderful that you got the position that you was running for. Thank you for giving me the time, and I will, you know, follow up with an email to you. Thank you.
Best of luck to you.
Susan Dobbs would like to speak about the possible relocation of the video program to the Michael Berry Career Center.
Hello, there was a second blue card with my blue card, so Madison Murdock and I will be sharing our time together. Is that okay?
Okay, so, I've got two for, with Madison Murdock.
Okay, she, she was on her way back from a class, so I put one in for her.
Oh, okay.
Greetings, Dr. Maleko and the Board of Education. My name is Susan Shamsadeen Dobbs, and I'm very fortunate to wear many hats in this community. And I'm sure some of you might remember me as one of those Montessori parents from way back in the day, so it's been a long time since I've had the opportunity to come and speak with you, and I'm very proud to be a member of this community. So, tonight, I'm not here as a teacher, I'm not here as a community member or a Fortson graduate, I am here as a parent and part of the community of Dearborn High School. And so, one of the things that I hope that we can impart to you is that, as a community at Dearborn High School, as I've noticed in all the presentations tonight, that all the schools have something special about them. And it is these pockets of culture and programming that enable students to flourish. And yes, we have the deck, yes, we have common assessments, yes, we have all these other great things that are happening instruction-wise, but it is the programs that fuel the hearts of students. And the WDHS Video Program is one such program. And it came to my attention and many other people's attention, especially my son, Tarek Dobbs, who is currently a junior at the University of Michigan Ann Arbor, and also a former award-winning, Emmy award-winning student of WDHS, and he was compelled to write a letter. And so, without further ado, I would like to turn it over to our executive producer of WDHS, Madison Murdock, who will read the letter, and I'd also like to thank the young men here that are also running the cameras, who are also part of the WDHS program, so take it away.
Okay. To Superintendent Dr. Glenn Maleko, the Dearborn Board of Education, and the broader Dearborn Schools community. As a 2015 WDHS alum and rising junior at the University of Michigan Ann Arbor, I can firsthandly attest to the WDHS value as an integral part of the Dearborn High experience, as well as its role in fostering a well-rounded college preparatory curriculum. WDHS gives high school students the opportunity to join one of the most comprehensive, competitive K-12 video programs in the country. During my four years at Dearborn, I was the program station manager, working on four award-winning productions, over 25 total, and was a recipient of various arts scholarships based on my video work, both during and after high school. WDHS is the gift that keeps on giving. As a junior at Dearborn, I received the Cable Fund Scholarship to attend the National High School Film Institute program at Northwestern University called Cherubs. Currently, I am returning for my third summer at Northwestern as a faculty assistant and RA, securing this job opportunity through connections I made as a high schooler. In my time at Michigan, I have been invited to combine my video production skillset and academic research, for example, video ethnography in cultural, wow, this is extra, in cultural anthropology studies. While WDHS is often looked to for its purely technical applications, like video production literacy, it truly opens opportunities for all realms of academics. Personally, without the ability to take rigorous honors and AP courses alongside intensive video courses, I would not be studying at a top university today. In light of rumors that DPS is considering moving Kurt Doley and the WDHS Student Program to the Michael Berry Center, I am writing to you on behalf of myself and WDHS alumni. Further, relocating would make this program inaccessible to students who take academically rigorous courses, forcing them to choose between arts and academics. The program's merit must not be underestimated. Graduating WDHS alum attended the best university film programs in the country, with production awards in the Natus Michigan Emmy Chapter, and pursue industry jobs based on experience gained in the program. Since WDHS was introduced to Dearborn High in 1989, we believe that instructor Kurt Doley and founder Russ Gibb have provided a unique, invaluable outlet for generations of Dearborn High students. Most importantly, if the Dearborn Board of Education wishes to move WDHS, we ask that you fully consider the value of WDHS student video to Dearborn High students. As I conclude my thoughts on my time at Dearborn, I am reminded of the strong community culture WDHS created here. Just last month, its annual film festival drew an audience of over 700. WDHS local culture and 32-year history of success at Dearborn High School is greatly relevant. As a result of Dearborn High School's community culture and academic rigor, our concern is that such a move could endanger the future of the program. Further, this is a community-based decision that must take, that must take future of the program into consideration. Further, it's a decision that must take the consideration of the stake of the students, faculty, and the greater Dearborn community they have in WDHS. Additionally, we suggest that a committee be organized to fully and carefully examine this rumored proposal to relocate WDHS. I would like to rejoin DPS Administration and the Board of Education in a meaningful dialogue and participate as a member of this committee. Sincerely, Tarek Dobbs. And this letter is also signed by numerous WDHS alumni and current students. Thank you.
Lastly, we have a statement that was prepared by Mr. Russ Gibb that is dated today, May 7th, which I will give to you. It says, "To whom this may concern, first, I would like to express my gratitude for your decision in naming the WDHS studio after me a few weeks ago. I appreciate your concern and I thank you. Recently, there has been talk about moving the studio to the Michael Berry Center. As you may know, Michael was my partner and was very instrumental in bringing the studio to Dearborn High. The studio was built for Dearborn High School students and ultimately belongs to them. I would appreciate any consideration you would give of leaving the studio at the high school, Russ Gibb." I would like to thank you, Madison, I would like to thank you on behalf of WDHS alum and the parents and students of Dearborn High School for giving us this time, it's very gracious. Thank you.
Thank you. I know that there are a number of blue cards, and some are addressing other issues that we discuss next week, and so, there may be some comments people are gonna make, but after all the blue cards are read, if anyone wants to make comments. Next blue card.
Violation of the Board Policy Religion Topic in School, Fatima Abdraabah. Sorry if I messed up the name.
Fatina Abdraabah. No worries, I'm messing up the name. It's been messed up worse in the past.
So is mine, all the time.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for your time. Members of the Board, Superintendent Maleko, my name is Attorney Fatina Abdraabah. I am here today in my capacity as the Director of the American Muslim and Minority Advocacy League, a organization based here in the city. I also want to force the rest of the students to slip out, congratulate them on all the great things that I've heard from the agenda today and all the great things that are just going on with the students in the district, so congratulations to all the students. And as while a portion of the, large portion of the agenda celebrated some of the great things that are happening in the city, I'm here to discuss today something that really runs afoul to the public school system, as I know it and as it's always been in this country, and that speaks to a problem of religion in the classroom. And I appreciate the policy of not identifying particular teacher names or student names for purposes of privacy, I'm an attorney, I respect that, so I'll speak to more of a situation to raise, to present it to you tonight. It's one in which a 7th-grade classroom in a Dearborn Public Schools school, Woodworth Middle School, had, as the incident in report was brought to me by both students in the classroom, their parents, and certainly a whole host of community folks, very alarmed at the situation. And I want to be clear about two things before I begin with this scenario. One, this is just really the tip of the iceberg in terms of presence of parents and other people on this matter, if it's not resolved amicably and lawfully, and really sensibly in terms of the needs of the students and the community in this area. And number two, I'm really proud of the ability of concerned parents and really moms, whose kids aren't even in the school district anymore, but just have such love and regard for the school district, having gone through it themselves, or having their students now older, their kids who are now older having gone through it too, so I can't point you all out, but I appreciate just their presence, and I'm sure you do. The long and short of it was a scenario where a 7th-grade teacher, for almost a week, proceeds with what I'll call proselyzation, effectively a, could have been a small Bible study going on there, whereby the teacher proceeds to share, under the guise of instruction on the study of religion, her personal experience with baptism. She brings in her, as I understand it, her Bible to the class, reads from it. The teacher also shares her own experience with coming to God and Jesus, and the process and way to do that. She, when confronted with some students who from, on the one hand, had a, just unease with it on the one hand, and others on the other hand were outright, you know, defiant, as it didn't sit well with them, 7th graders are, these days are pretty smart and gutsy, her response was sadly and shockingly, one of intimidating and really, as I understand it, threatening to send these students to the principal's office for lack of respecting her religion. Don't need to rehash, I know we have lawyers on the Board and a whole strong community that understands the law very clearly, the law is pretty clear on this, and this is not the type of things that should be allowed in any school district, anywhere, where, you know, it turns into a proselyzation session. The other thing I'd like to just raise is that, in addition, the teacher proceeds to, at the end of the week with the finale, show the class a clip of the notorious Passion of the Christ, that is, I have never seen it, I've always had one of those weak hearts that couldn't, because of what everybody knows about that film, is that it's grueling and full of blood, and it's gory, not to mention the fact it certainly doesn't fit into your G-rated protocol that is required of the school district, that would otherwise, because it's not G-rated, would require some type of consent, no consent was certainly sought, as I understand it, no parents were aware of that film, and the proof is really in the pudding with all the mix of these issues, not only direct violation of church and state components that we should never allow in our public school system, but also the irresponsibility with which the imagery was shown to students in the class, the, I can't emphasize enough really the shock and trauma that I've received in terms of reporting from the students in the class and their parents, who, from one end of the spectrum are just, continue to be in disbelief, and to the other end of the spectrum are really, really angry and frustrated with that this could have occurred in a public school system in the city of Dearborn in the United States of America. So, I need not discuss any further, any of the political or sensible sensitivity undertones that probably go without stating, but I guess as a former student in Dearborn Public Schools, where I was at Howard in the 80s, and eventually at, through Dearborn High in the 90s, I think we need our public school systems to teach people, you know, how to think and not what to believe. So, I expect and hope that this matter is resolved amicably, lawfully, and with regard and respect to not only all the people in the room today, but to the community and to the citizens and to really the students in the Dearborn Public Schools. Thank you for your time.
A violation of Board Policy Teaching About Religion in School, Kafaya Shammy.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kafaya Shammy, and I am a concerned parent. I already initially sent an email to you with the video that Fatina had just mentioned today, as well as the questionnaire that was given to the students that I felt was very subjective and to reinforce the beliefs of the teacher of what she was teaching them over a four-day period. This incident was actually something very personal to me. My son had, as Fatina already mentioned, some of the things that had occurred during the week. The thing that stood out the most to me was when my son came home on Friday throwing up, and when I asked him what was wrong, he was telling me that he had watched a video in class that made him feel unease. Knowing my son, he's the type of kid, when I take him to the doctor's office, they actually have to lay him down on a table and two people have to hold him down just to get a blood draw, because he can't stand the sight of blood. So, that reaction from him was not surprising to me. He was able to pull up the video, which I could hardly finish myself, as I watched it, in not only frustration, anger, but feeling sorry for my child that he had to actually be subjected to that in a Dearborn Public School. So, you know, just like the Board of Education, you know, we are in favor of understanding the religions for our children, and the contributions religions have made to the advancement of civilizations. In fact, we believe that understanding and embracing others and their beliefs is a beautiful thing, and we have nothing against teaching world religions in the class, however, there are set Board Policies, bylaws, and guidelines of how it should be done, and I feel like what was done inside that particular class during that particular week broke all the major guidelines, which is the four-part test that you need to follow. And I don't feel like I have to sit here and read the rules and bylaws to you guys, I'm sure that you guys are well aware of them. So, the thing that was even more alarming, and I was trying to initially keep it between the parents and the three people that I had initially sent my concerns to, but when I received a call while I was at work by the principal of the school, telling me, giving me an update of what the investigation was, the outcome of the investigation, so far up to that date, which was technically about four days later from when they initially received my email, or was maybe five days later, basically, it sounded like a bunch of excuses to me on the phone, and it sounded like they were not taking my concerns very serious, and that's why I brought it to your attention today. So, this was basically what was said to me, that it was part of the curriculum for students to learn about world religions, which I completely understand, however, the way that it was presented to them, I feel like broke all of the policies and bylaws. It also said that the student, the teacher did not allow, it was said to me that the teacher did not allow the video to run to the end, which is completely false. As soon as they said that to me, I still had to maintain my professionalism, because I was at work when I received the phone call, and it was completely false, because my son was able to describe every single detail of that movie, every single detail, to the point, I told you, I did not really watch it to the end because I couldn't handle it, but later, when she said that to me, and I couldn't really argue with her on the phone, I went back to watch the video, and I watched it to the end, and it was exactly what my son had described to me, and that was false, so I did not like that it was said to me in that way. It doesn't even matter, that wasn't the point, the point was, even if they watched the beginning part, it's just as grotesque as the end of it. Also, the other thing that was said to me is that the teacher was new, are basically implying that she's inexperienced. When, when my son brought the information to me immediately, as a mother, you know, I had to look her up, and social media is public to everyone, so whatever you post on there, you, you know, it's public to everyone, everyone has access to it, and I learned that the teacher was not new, in fact, she was a very seasoned teacher, she had 12 years' experience, so if you feel like a 12-person, a person with 12 years' experience of teaching is an inexperienced teacher, then what do you consider an experienced teacher? So, clearly, using the excuse that I felt like it was an excuse that the teacher was new, certainly was something that alarmed me and actually made me even more frustrated with the situation. And then finally, the other thing that was very upsetting, I did get a call from a different person, who was actually a higher-up, to let me know again that the investigation is ongoing, but in that conversation, I learned that there were specific details that were mentioned by my son, and that I had also mentioned to the person that was on the phone with me, saying, you know, again, reiterating some of the stuff that I just said, the excuses that were given to me before, and I said, "Well, no, social media, according to social media." media." She's been teaching for 12 years, and that person that I was speaking to was almost dumbfounded. So, for them not to know that information, told me that they weren't really investigating anything. I mean, and then they also told me that only clips of the video were seen, and the person actually thought it was all done over one day, and I'm like, "No, it happened over a four-day period." So again, you're telling me you've been investigating something for four days, five days, maybe longer, and yet you didn't have these particular details with you? And finally, in addition to the video, there were questions that were given to reinforce the educate, the, you know, information that was given to the students during that week, and this person didn't even have an idea that this questionnaire existed. So again, what were they investigating during the four or five time, five days that they were supposedly investigating? Again, downplaying, I felt like they were downplaying my complaint or my concerns, and I felt like it was very important for me to come up here to the board and make it clear that this is something that is an issue not only to myself, to my child, because I feel like his safety is at risk, I feel like he's in a class because that, where the teacher's professional judgment is questionable. And then, you know, I understand that there's privacy laws. As a healthcare provider, we follow the HIPAA guidelines, so we completely understand that privacy laws do exist and we have to uphold them, but I still need to know exactly what is being investigated and what exactly is going to be coming out of this investigation, and how are things going to be improved, or how is this going to be prevented in the upcoming days where we're sending, you know, entrusting our children into the Dearborn Schools? So, I think, I think at this point, I think that's all I just wanted to share, to make it clear that this is something that's urgent and it needs to be looked into. It doesn't only affect me, it affects the entire community, and I hope they're able to get back to us with information that's reasonable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
(applause) Next, blue card.
Religion in the curriculum, Brenda Zebon.
Good evening, President Bazey and members of the board. My name is Brenda Zebon, and I'm a community member from the east side of Dearborn. One sunny day last summer, while I was working outside in my yard, I saw many children playing outside in the neighborhood, and they're all headed for high school eventually. As I glanced up the street, I noticed some missionaries walking down the street, and I stayed in my front yard, waiting to see if they were going to stop and talk to any of the kids. It was very interesting to see how many like-minded adults live on my street, because several parents hung out in their front yards also to make sure that the missionaries did not evangelize the kids. Eventually, a neighbor engaged the missionaries in conversation, and then everyone else kind went back to what they were doing. When we are out in our neighborhoods and parks, we are very aware of the many missionaries that seem to descend on Dearborn, and we seek to protect our children from unwanted influence. But when our children are in school, we must trust our board, administrators, teachers, and staff to protect them. The board has done what it can to protect students from such influence via the provisions of Section 2270 of the district bylaws regarding religion in the curriculum, which directs professional staff to be neutral in their approach when using instructional and resource materials that contain religious references. And the section also states that the superintendent shall prepare administrative guidelines, which ensure that students are not influenced to accept a particular religious belief or point of view, and there are such guidelines. Despite the policies, parents were recently disturbed by incidents in a seventh grade class, as you've heard. The content expectations were to identify and describe the beliefs of the six major world religions, locate their geographical center, and map how they spread through the third century. Because I'm old fashioned, perhaps I'm old fashioned to think that history is generally taught in chronological order, in that Judaism would be covered before Christianity. There was no reference to Abraham, Moses, and the Ten Commandments in the description of Christian beliefs, or by reference via the Jewish beliefs, which were not studied at that point. According to parents, the class spent four days learning about Jesus. The teacher allegedly brought her personal Bible to school and read scriptures to the students, shared her personal experience of being baptized, told them the story of the crucifixion and resurrection, and showed them a very disturbing excerpt from the R-rated movie, The Passion of the Christ. This is a movie that adults find disturbing, and these were 12-year-olds. Roger Ebert, a well-known movie critic, described this movie as one of the most violent he has ever seen, and students were very disturbed by the film clip. I understand that a complaint was made in accordance with board policy, but don't know if the third level of that process has been completed. I ask that a thorough and fair investigation be made into this incident and that appropriate actions be taken. But going beyond this specific incident, I am disturbed by comments that this is not uncommon and that it's not the first time this sort of thing has happened. These are things that I'm hearing. Certainly, there are many seventh grade classrooms in Dearborn Public Schools where parents did not have any issues with the teaching approach to this curriculum item, or if they did issues, the issues were too minor to even mention a complaint. An individual teacher's concept of a neutral approach might be different from another teacher's viewpoint or from a parent's viewpoint. Therefore, I request that you consider expanding the administrative guidelines to greater define the approach to teaching students about world religions, as well as the approach when commenting on religious references in other subject areas. It would be helpful for all to have examples of what you can and cannot do in the classroom available to both teachers and parents, so that everyone is informed. Is the use of personal anecdotal stories appropriate? Can the amount of time spent on teaching a point negate the neutrality? This is very important, because parents understand that teachers are in a unique position to impact their students' lives. I know we have some very talented people in our administration that could draft and implement improvements in this area. Adding some well-thought-out specifics to the policy, or even to a separate training document, will protect our students and will also protect our teachers from accusations of wrongdoing. Thank you.
Thank you. (applause)
Religion in the classroom, Sheikah Ahmed.
My name is Sheikah Ahmed. I'm actually here on behalf of my niece. She was one of the students in the seventh grade classroom that was subjected to this four-day, I don't even know what to call it. I just want to voice my concern, because it's not, my niece actually decided to stay quiet about the whole incident and didn't feel that, I don't know how to say it, she didn't feel that she wanted to alert any problems. She was, she's a good girl, but it is very traumatizing for me as an aunt to see what she could have been going through, in that I want to take a stand here and just say that, I mean, there's nothing wrong with teaching religions of all sorts in a classroom. We all agree to it. We've all been taught in Dearborn Public Schools. My teachers never taught us to that extreme. We weren't shown any videos about the crucifixion, and the point is, you can teach religion without enforcing religion on a student, and so therefore, some kind of action has to be taken care of. Maybe new guidelines of what teachers should teach students. We need to be very proactive to allow these teachers to know that you cannot come into a school and just decide to wing it, you know, basically. All I have to say is, I would like to take, see some kind of steps taken to be able to see where this goes and how to maybe teach this teacher that she should not have done what she did, and hopefully that next year, the students will not be subjected to what was done this year. I really had big concern, because I thought, here we are in May, and this, I thought, I didn't know that the teacher was new, so I thought, oh, since September, she, I don't know what she could have been teaching the students, but to find out that she's new is, you know, she needs to be taught. She needs to be taught. I mean, I would never ask to terminate the teacher, but I would actually say that there needs to be guidelines to what students can be taught about different religions in the classroom of Dearborn Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. (applause)
Religion in public school, Mar sala Ahmed.
My name is Mar sala Ahmed. Actually, her niece is my daughter, so just to say a few things that she didn't cover. Fatina and Kafaya said it perfectly. I'm not here because I'm very disturbed with this teacher. Unfortunately, my sister mentioned that she's not here to terminate her. I am here to terminate her, and I'm being honest, because I think she went to extremes. We are at an age where we're trying to protect our kids from social media and trying to make sure that they're not seeing violence and things that they're not supposed to be seeing, and here, I have to now worry about what's being shown in the classroom. My daughter is a quiet girl, so when she came home Friday and didn't mention anything about that class, except, "Oh, we're learning world religion," I knew there was something wrong, but I thought, mm, okay, world religion, we all went to Dearborn Public Schools, we all went through it, we got an overview of world religions, we didn't see the crucifixion of Christ, we didn't see it like that in a R-rated movie. She went on and brought a Bible, and she read, you know, passages from it to our students, which, and the students themselves, told her repeatedly that they did not want to, they did not believe in what she's believing, that we don't believe in Christ like that, we don't believe in Jesus like that, and she just kept going. I'm not against Christianity, but that's not where we want to send our kids to learn religion. I had my daughter in Islamic schools for seven years, and this is her first year in a public school. So, if I want my daughter to learn religion, I'll send her where I want her to learn religion. That's not the place for it. So, I mean, I understand she's proud of her religion, and everybody is proud of their own religion. They're not going to say their religion is bad, and their religion is not bad, but that's not what she should have been doing. So, for me, I think she's not the right teacher for our students. I've met her, she's a nice person. I'm not going to say she's not nice, but she went way beyond her scope of as a teacher. That's not what she should have been doing. She shouldn't have been teaching my child Christianity or any other religion, and the fact that she came back saying, "Oh, we're going to go through Judaism fast and go on to Islam," I don't know, I don't know if she was trying to make it like excusable, "Okay, we don't need to know Judaism, why wouldn't the students need to know a little bit, an overview of Judaism, and why would they need to focus on Islam?" It's not about Christianity or Islam. She shouldn't have been teaching any kind of form of religion. She should have been just teaching them the basics, overview of world religion as it is in the textbooks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So, I do want to make a couple remarks. I think that it's important, we generally don't like to remark on blue cards, but this is a very important topic. First of all, I agree with everyone who spoke. There is no reason why any teacher should be preaching religion to students in the classrooms, and I would be very upset, I have a seventh grader, and I would be very angry and upset if I learned that that happened while my daughter was in school, and frankly, it doesn't matter what the religion is, I don't want anyone preaching the religion I have to my child that I haven't sanctioned. And so, I completely respect, appreciate all your comments, and frankly, I appreciate your all coming here today, because sometimes things happen, they need to be brought to the, they have to be brought to the attention of the board, administration, staff, so that we can deal with them appropriately. And certainly, we are looking at our processes and procedures and policies and curriculum and making sure, as some of the speakers had spoken, that what is, what are the teachers being given in terms of curriculum in teaching a subject like world religion? I agree, it needs to be neutral, and maybe that means we have to develop more policies, but we also have to give teachers the abilities, flexibility to teach while still maintaining neutrality in their teaching, and that I 100% agree with. One other thing, I'm not going to comment, I'm not the one doing the investigation, the district is, however, I would state, there's the question of intent, and I think that, you know, that's something that has to be determined by the district. If someone made a mistake, it's a mistake, and we have to certainly hold them accountable for the mistake and move forward, and if they did it purposely, there's a different accountability that's taken into account. And I think before we decide what needs to happen to this teacher today, we really need to step back and give that, the district and that teacher, the ability to have a fair process in terms of investigating this allegation, because it needs to be investigated, and then I have full faith in this district and this in proceeding in a manner that is consistent, certainly, with the law. There is a separation of church and state, and that will always be the case in Dearborn Public Schools, and when it isn't, we will address it immediately. But I caution that we have to, it's, it isn't as clear-cut, there needs to be a question of what the intent of that teacher is, and I do caution people going on social media to deliver facts. I think social media, certainly, you can bring things to the attention, but we all know that there's a lot of false statements out on social media, so I do caution people who rely on social media and rumor and innuendo as facts, however, we do know that there's usually something to, something behind it, and we are investigating. I know Trustee Lane wanted to say something.
Yeah, I'd like to make a statement also on this. First of all, I'd like to apologize to the students. I did look at the video, and I had a very hard time sitting through the video. I didn't want to sit through the video. I have a hard time understanding how that video was played. That was not a G-rated video. When I try to play, even look at some pictures on the screen, I get stuff popping up saying, "Not in accordance with Dearborn School guidelines." So, Dr. Maleko, I know you're going to investigate this, but I'd like to know, is there a violation of our, I mean, there's, it looks like there's multiple violations of policy. I'd like to know what they are, how they happened. I saw Mr. Patterson in the room here a while ago, so maybe we not only need to look at our policies, but also maybe we need to look at our technology. Well, how did we have this failure? So, there's a lot of different things. I'm very sorry for the students that watched that, because in my mind, that was excessively violent. If I saw what the students saw, I was shocked, and violence is an affront to the human mind. I would not want, I do not want students to see, that's why we have a policy against violence. We know in studies of mental health that students who have access to weapons, who see violence, who experience violence, it's a mental health hazard to students. In my mind, that, that should not have happened, and I did look at the study guide also. I don't see, but I will leave it up to Dr. Maleko to investigate. I did not see how it was relevant to the big picture of world religions, without even asking the question, were the other religions all treated equally? So, I hope, Dr. Maleko, you will make a public statement, because the whole public, the whole community wants to know this. And as President Bazey has said, I'm not going to predetermine, I have no idea what outcome should come. I understand why people have suggested certain results, firing or not firing, but I hope that the entire board will be aware of the details of this, and then that there'll be a public statement, and I'm not saying one way or another what the outcome should be, I don't know those details, but I know that the, this does need to be investigated, so.
Trustee Petlicoff.
And one of the things that I really heard from everyone in the community who was speaking is, they lost trust in the district in sending their student to a classroom where they anticipated that they would be well-cared-for, and they, their faith is shaken in our ability to be a And they, their faith is shaken in our ability to be accountable to their students' well-being. So, I want to make sure as well that this is a thorough investigation and that we find a way to make sure that it never, ever happens again, because everybody who sends their students to our buildings ought to have faith that we are going. That's what we've, that's our mission, is to place these students first, so.
Trustee Hamid.
I also agree with everybody's comments, and I want to say that I commend the parents for being our partners, our watch partners in the schools, and your kids as well, to come back and let us know what is happening, because this is, you know, this is a very disturbing issue that doesn't only affect the students that happen at Woodworth. I think this is the time where we set the record straight, not here, not in our classrooms. So, I commend all of you, and I do trust that the administration is going to do a thorough investigation, because we don't have room for this not here at Dearborn Public Schools.
Trustee Barry.
I agree with pretty much what everybody said. I mean, this is a sad moment. I mean, we started off the meeting just feeling so much pride, you know, of all the great work that we do, and this is, this is a low point for me during this meeting, so. But what was, I also thank the parents. What was brought to my attention was something that I was told, that this is a new, quote-unquote, "new teacher" almost a week ago. I don't need an answer today, but I would like to know, that's, I would like to be part of the investigation. Is this a new teacher or not?
She might be new to the district, but I've taught 12.
Where he or she came to come from? Is there a reason why she came to Woodworth? Is there a reason why she left the district?
Uh, one second.
Trustee Barry, the teacher was hired this January by Dearborn Schools, so she's new to our district.
That's not what I was told. I don't need an answer tonight, this should be part of the investigation. That's not what I was told, new to our district. I was told she's a new teacher, and I'm like, mm, okay, fresh out of college type thing. I don't know the teacher.
I can confirm that she's new to our district.
She's new to our district.
And she has a year and a half at a charter school prior to being hired by Dearborn Schools. The investigation is still ongoing.
Good.
And since I'm up here, my name's Mason Ali Bazey, and I'm the Executive Director for Staff and Student Services. First and foremost, my apologies to the students and to the parents, and I just want to say and assure everyone that this has been taken extremely serious from the moment it was brought to our attention. And as I said, the investigation is still ongoing. I can't share because of confidentiality, I can't share the details of what has taken place so far. But first, and also, I want to just assure everyone that the matter is being handled very seriously.
Sure, thank you. I wasn't looking for answers tonight, but since you're up here, is this teacher in the classroom as we speak?
The teacher was sent home immediately that morning that it was brought to our attention.
Can we continue to talk about this, if this is a personnel matter?
I won't give any details more than that.
I wasn't looking for answers to that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah. No, no, that's okay. I can say she is in the classroom right now.
She is in the classroom right now, okay.
And that was the result of the initial investigation, yes.
And I guess just in commenting too, that I apologize as well. I agree with everyone here, you know, with Trustee Barry and Trustee Lane, I feel the same way. I can tell you, though, that it definitely was taken very seriously immediately, and as soon as it came to our attention, as Ms. Ali Bazey, you know, and action was taken, it got up to my level. I had also informed the Board of, it was about, within a day, I think, informed the Board on the situation, and then, you know, we dealt with it. So, we're going to still, I think, continue, you know, working with a couple areas. One is making sure that we have all, every single detail. And then the second thing is just, which was said about guidelines and things. And so, I think that's important for us to review, and I know we talked about that today, so we're going to do that, and I talked to Dr. Chokel, so we're going to do a review of that. We do, as mentioned, though, we do have world religions in the curriculum. We also have, you know, we actually have some that go on a trip, that they take field trips to different areas. And that's done through Ms. Charles, and that's been a real positive.
Diversity journeys, yeah.
So, you know, but obviously, a video of that nature, absolutely not. I mean, it shouldn't, never, never been shown. And so, we'll continue to investigate, we'll get the information. But I just want to assure the parents that I, you know, we, this was taken seriously. It was brought up to my level almost immediately, within that, that specific day. And then again, I brought it to the attention of the Board, just to let them know that we were investigating and, you know, the process we were going through. So, but having said that, I apologize to the families, and I thank the people that came forward, and I agree with all the comments that have been made tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I've given my business card to everyone that's here, that has come and spoke. And if you have any, Trustee Barry, if you have other questions, feel free to direct them my way, and we'll work through it. Thank you.
Thank you.